Uh, so follows me the order and I will ask, uh, first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for January sixteenth. Uh, this is a very short meeting, so the minutes aren't very long. So, my here a motion to accept the minutes as presented. So move.
Second.
Motion to move second, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I hear four, five, yes, ayes.
Well, you can go with the hand count if you'd like.
Okay, all right. The first item on the, the first item on the agenda is, uh, at seven fifteen, which is another four or five minutes. We've got, uh, case number fourteen oh three, twenty-one Marysfield Road, uh, for an in-law apartment, and presented by Clark Associates on the Capitol, Angela Schrank.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, it's my understanding after conversation with the building inspector that this application is going to be withdrawn.
Uh, that is, that is, that is probably, probably right.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, uh, they're gonna be.
I've asked the builder to be here tonight.
Oh, you did? Oh, I see, okay. But I didn't think he was gonna be.
What was the hearing inspector saying?
He had the same reaction to the plans that we have, which is that it essentially wasn't a valid layout, uh, for anything that he has requested. Uh, and Ken said that when he talked to him about it, you know, his response was, "Oh, okay, uh, we're probably gonna go forward with, uh, a plan to make it a quasi-living unit, but not a formal in-law apartment, uh, or one that would qualify even as a, uh, potentially considered as a conversion to a two-family." But I'm not even sure he's, uh, come. I mean, I spoke to, when I spoke to Ken, I think on Tuesday, and he told me that, that he spoke to the guy and that's what he said, so maybe, maybe he intends to come anyhow, just to withdraw it.
Well, I, I, I asked that he, he, uh, Mr. Clark be here tonight.
All right.
Uh, he did say he'd be here at seven fifteen.
Okay.
All right, so we'll give him a few more minutes.
Yeah, I look at these, these plans.
I won't, I won't open the, I won't, I'm not open the hearing, uh, till he gets there.
That's fine. And my favorite day or night. Where's he come from, you know? Is, is Mr. Clark from where I'm here?
Dave Clark Ipswich.
Is he?
It's the same Dave Clark that I like.
No, it's not Dave.
Is that Dave?
No.
Oh, who was it?
Jeff.
Jeff.
I don't know if there's any relation.
Clark Associates.
Yeah, these folks are still open, open in the hearing because we have to dispense with it one way or another.
Yep, yeah, it's gotta be open. I mean, he has to withdraw it first, but close it down, right? And the ones who withdraw that, then we can.
Right, okay. All right, let's do that. Um, okay, uh. Lisa, do you have the application?
Yes. You wanna read the script? No, you do want to, you wanna read it, Ken, I'm not sure if you want it too.
Okay, well, let's see here. Okay, uh, public hearing, case number fourteen point oh three from Angela Schrank. For a special permit, twenty-one Marysfield Road is now open. We don't have anybody here in the attendance, so, uh, I'll just go on. Anybody have any conflict, interest on this?
No.
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 Okay, uh, okay, public notice of this application was posted to Town Hall, sent to a certified listed by its interested, and was published in the Town Comment on March twelfth, two thousand fourteen, and March nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, and reads as follows. The public hearing will be held at Town Hall Annex Thirty-Nine Central Street on Thursday, March twentieth, two thousand fourteen, at seven fifteen P. M. To act on an application, receive February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, from Jeff Clark of Clark Associates LLC, representing Angela Schrank, twenty-one Marysfield Road, Raleigh, Mass. The applicant is requesting a special permit from the Board of Appeals for a in-law apartment from the requirements of section six point six of the Raleigh Protector's Zone bylaws. Property is located at twenty-one Marysfield Road, Raleigh, Mass. The property is in the central district and is shown on assessors map twenty-five lot two at the public hearing. Members of the public may ask questions and present evidence that support either the approval or denial of this petition. Purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear and consider the pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve with conditions or deny. Before hearing from the public, the advocates will be allowed to present a case, sound apartment letters, or comments will be read for the record, and then board members will be allowed to ask questions upon it. Okay, Mr. Clark is not here yet.
Where exactly is Marysfield? I don't know where it is.
Uh, it's across from, uh, sicko station in one A.
Sicko, yes.
Sicko.
Nose, nose, nose gas, nose gas station.
Yeah.
Is it across from there?
Yeah.
Not, not quite directly across, it's a little, if the gas station's back to your, at your back, a little to the left.
If you move a little closer to town, why?
Going towards town, northbound from there.
You go down, just a bit, you're still in there, yeah.
It's on the east side.
It's right across.
It's on the east side of one A.
It's on the east side of one A? And it touches Ipswich?
Yeah.
Ipswich is in the back of it there, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Is it before or after the, um, hotel?
The what? Before. Uh, it's be, it's before going, going on.
It's next to that new development.
Oh, yeah? Oh, okay. Must be just a little street, huh?
Yes.
Yep.
It's about eight or ten houses in there.
One A, yes, right here.
Right here? Okay.
Advocate is Angela Schrank, twenty-one Marysfield Road, and she is the owner. Uh, they're asking for a special permit under section six point six of the Raleigh Protector's Zone bylaw. And the premises is twenty-one's Maryfield, Raleigh assessors map number twenty-five, block one oh five, block number two, uh, is in the central district, and over way. Uh, the deed is recorded Essex Bridge District, self-district, at book one oh two seven four, page four seven nine. And they are asking to convert the bedroom to hallway and build in-law suite over the garage. That's what the application stands for.
On this first page, John, it looks like there's a line drawn right through here and right through there.
Yeah.
Is it? They got a wrong number?
No, they put it in the wrong place.
Yeah, oh, okay.
They put it in the wrong place now.
All right.
That's all it is.
All right.
That's what I thought, so. See? Yeah. Four.
Okay, okay.
How's the line correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah? Uh. So what district is this in? Where did this come from? This doesn't look like a, this looks like an old application.
No, no, it's on the same one.
This is a current?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
She thinks central, this is the, uh, the buyer's list has been certified, but then this will notify?
Yes.
Okay, I have, I have gone through this, uh, floor plan, and I find it very confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Very confusing, especially what you're doing. Uh, but I'll go back here to the bylaw, and I said the six point six, and six point six is accessory in-law apartments. And six point six point one point one reads, "The Board of Appeals may issue a special permit authorizing an accessory in-law apartment within or as, and attached addition to, a single-family dwelling, subject to the conditions and requirements specified in this section. Any special permit issued under this section shall be consistent with the intent of this section, which is to provide an alternative housing option to the family members of individuals who own and occupy single-family dwellings in the town of Raleigh while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's single-family neighborhood. The intent of this section is not to create new rental units in town, or to provide owners of single-family dwellings with an opportunity to, uh, rental income." General requirements, the principal dwelling must be located in the central district, residential district, the outline district, or the coastal conservation district. Section six point, six point two two, except as provided in section six six two three, the apartment shall be a complete, shall be a complete housekeeping unit that functions as a separate unit from the principal dwelling. The apartment shall contain a kitchen and shall not have more than one bedroom and one bathroom.
What do you got there, six?
Six six two two, is what I'm reading.
One, six.
The floor area in the apartment may not exceed seven hundred square feet, except that the board may waive this limitation for an application involving a unit for which a special permit was issued under section six six prior to February eighth, two thousand twelve, but only if the floor area of such unit has not increased since the date of such special permit. Only one apartment is allowed with dwelling. Any stairway to the apartment located above the first floor of the building shall be enclosed within the next level walls of the building, and the principal dwelling in the apartment shall be served by the same driveway. Utilities of the apartment shall be extensions of the existing utilities that serve the principal dwelling. No u, no new utility service or meter may be installed for the use of the apartment. Ownership and use requirements, the apartment shall not be held in separate ownership from the principal dwelling under a secondary requirement of ownership of the dwelling. I think this is good, good for us to really read this new bylaw, because it's, it's new. Six six three two, the special permit shall be issued to the record owner of the lot, and shall specify that one or more of the record owners, if title is held by a natural person or by natural persons in joint tenancy or other form of common ownership, or one or more of the natural persons who are beneficiaries of titles held by a trust, or the natural person owning fifty percent or more of the entity. If title is held in any other form of ownership, must occupy either the principal dwelling or the apartment, if it's his or a primary residence.
What's the, what's the definition of a natural person?
You had to bring that up.
I know.
Not a corporation.
Not a corporation.
Well, that's one thing it isn't.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
That's a good clarification.
Yeah, because it says that in the Constitution too, as far as the dis, as far as the description of the president, has to be a natural person.
Oh, you mean natural born.
Natural born, yeah.
Yeah, that's different than natural persons.
Yeah, additional word there.
Okay, six six three three, the record owner shall simultaneously record the special permit and a declaration of covenants in a form approved by the Board of Appeals with the registered deed. Declaration shall be in favor of the town and shall include the following statement: The special permit for an accessory in-law apartment shall terminate upon a transfer of ownership of the subject premises, or upon the undersigned termination of his or her use of the special premises as a primary residence. Proof of recording of the special permit and the declaration shall be provided through the building inspector and the board before a building or occupancy permit may be issued for the apartment. In section six six three four, occupancy of the apartment shall be limited to a maximum of two persons, and at least one of the occupants of the principal dwelling and one of the occupants of the apartment must be related by blood or marriage. Okay, that being said.
So from the region of this, it's my understanding, you know, at least the one area that they're not compliant would be, in compliance would be that their proposed building is over seven hundred square feet, this is for the apartment?
Yes, would be.
Is that the only thing, or are there other issues?
Uh, well, I think that's the prime, that's the primary.
That's the major one, which is the deal killer right there.
Right.
Major one.
That's my view of it, certainly. But then, I mean, the other area that I think is also, uh, where there are violations is the, the bylaws says it has to be a complete, it says complete unit, and by looking at the drawing, I don't see the area that they're going to designate as this apartment as a complete unit, it just looks like it's the whole upstairs of the house.
Yeah, the whole second floor.
The whole second floor. I, I don't see closed off by wall partition or that, so that's another, but, but the first thing, I agree, I think the. So that's another, but, but the first thing, I agree, I think the issue is, is more fundamentally the size. You know, and the dimensions here
Well, those.
require quite a bit of math in order to come up with the exact number, but since it's not closed up, as far as I'm concerned, it's the whole top floor, which is, by the dimensions on the house, is probably about a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So I, you know, and, and that's what, that's what Ken Ward said. Jeff Clark said, oh, okay, well, we'll probably not build a kitchen. And we will, we'll do it, but we're not going to do it with, with a functional kitchen. Well.
Well, then.
Then he's really, he can do anything he wants, but he's not got, he's not going to end up with an in-law designation or a two-family designation.
Right.
That's all.
As, as I, as I understand uh, from talking to Lisa and I also was talking to Ken yesterday. And he told him that he could, he would give him the building permit as long as he didn't put a stove in the kitchen. Well, that's all really good. And I told, I told Ken, I says, well, you know, what's going to happen is he does put a stove in there, he can just put his wiring up behind the cabinet and put a cabinet in there and after he gets inspection, just slide it out and put a stove in there. He says, oh, no, that'll never happen.
Yeah.
No, 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 Hillwood, you won't do that.
We've seen it happen.
Of course it'll happen.
So what I'm afraid of is that he's already got a building permit to do, to do what he wants. And that's why I wanted him to come here tonight to talk to us. And he obviously isn't going to come.
No.
At this point.
I read the piece of writing.
So, uh, it was suggested that and Lisa has the paperwork already for him to sign for, asking for a withdrawal. Alright? But in lieu of what's happened, I don't think we should allow him to withdraw. I think we should deny this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I, I think we should deny this because maybe, maybe he won't. And the shranks may not, may not may abide by, uh, you know, not having a stove and not having a full kitchen and so forth. That's all really good, but when they go to sell, the next owner, go in there and say, oh, we got a kitchen, no stove, we'll just put a stove in here. And now we have a two-family home.
Well, typically, um, that's true, and, and I, I agree with you about denying. I think we can deny so we formally have the zoning board's finding on the application as submitted. But I think with the absence of any designation from us, regardless of what the building inspector allows them to do, in the event of a resale, if he represents as a in-law or as a, as whatever he represents it at, typically the, the lender will seek verification that in fact is that, there've been a couple of cases recently where lenders have come to us because I believe the, the, uh, the seller represented the, the house as having a certain capability, either a finished basement with a kitchen in it or an in-law situation. And our records, in fact, Lisa and I had one regarding that came through from the planning board, and it was the same kind of thing. There was nothing in our records that showed it had either come before the zoning board for anything, let alone what the, what this, what the owner wanted. So I, I think they'll be tricked up i- if they attempt to market the property in the future as though it's designated, whatever it looks like, whether it looks like a two-family or an in-law. What I think, what I think they need to understand is.
No, what, 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 what I, what I, what I was thinking of, because, you know, they, they sell it as a single family and the people that come in and buy it is a single family.
Yeah.
And, uh, but if everything's there except the stove,
Yeah.
the new owner, after they've got their mortgage and everything else, could very easily slip us in there and start renting it out.
Well, yeah, but isn't that, isn't, that's without our, that's beyond our purview. I don't know how we have any way to prevent that. I mean, the only thing you can do is the building inspector would have to put some constraint on his permit in which, at any point in time, whether it's a wiring restriction. You know, I mean, because I don't know, I don't know how we stop it.
Yeah, that, you're talking about enforcement.
Yeah.
And we can enforce.
Right.
I mean, if people are going to violate the law.
What can you do?
They're going to violate the law.
Yeah, but that's enforcement. Uh, we, we can certainly, I think, we can put in our findings, I suppose, that, you know, that the, that the unit didn't meet, you know, conditions for an accessory in-law because one, it was too large, uh, two, it wasn't an independent unit. And that, I, I suppose we could add in that any, any owners, any present, and the present owner's efforts or future owner's efforts without proper permitting to install kitchen-related appliances in the second floor would be likely, you know, a violation of the bylaw. I, I, yeah, I don't know what else you could do.
Okay, alright, how, how is it, how is it going to be tracked?
Can't be tracked. There's no way to track it. Ken tracks it because it's his building permit. All we're doing is going to say to him, you can't do that. That's all we can really say. We don't have, if, if he were going to do, if we were going to grant it under some conditions, then it's theoretically tracked because of course if it sells, they have to come back to us with it. But we've had questions about enforcement under those conditions that we don't know about that. I, you know, but I think we should deny it because at least then there's a record that we get recorded that shows that it came before and denied it. And you're right, he had the option to withdraw. You gave the twenty to do is come here and say, okay, we don't want it. Then he can sort of just sneak away. Now with the official record of it, in my opinion, but that's, I don't see we can do anything else. Do we file it? We file it with the, I think we file our decision with town. I don't think there's anything to record it. I mean, we can't force them to record it, it's a same issue.
Right. No, with the board could file it.
Yeah, there are some boards that do that, that do file everything. They do, from their fees, they, they, they generate the funds to go ahead and file it.
Seventy-five bucks.
Is that what it is?
Okay, I mean, that's, that's the catch-all, is seventy-five. If it's not otherwise designated, it's seventy-five.
That's, that's a subject that I think the board should revisit.
If you've got a budget to do it, yeah.
Right.
Can't afford it with denial.
Well, even, even every, yeah, right. Well, we've got, we have some, yeah, we've got application money here.
We, we have.
We got the money.
We have money. You know, in the event that you're concerned that somebody's going to try to circumvent kind of the bylaw, or somebody's going to be taking advantage of, like in the water, you put it on record.
Yeah, because they won't come in and check the town clerk's record.
No, no, the title search would show it. I don't know, but I, I think, I think Bob's right, it's, it's essentially a, it's, it's one of these enforcement issues that there's no way to, there's no way to control whether it happened or not.
No, but that's not a bad way, I mean, recording it at least protects a subsequent owner. Because then they're unnoticed.
That's true.
That's how they can't do it.
Well, it's, it's, it's simply told them they can't use it this way.
Right, oh, yeah. They can use it as a single family, right?
Well, I mean, it, 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 they might be able to use it. You might be able to put a two-family in here, an in-law, just not the way it's been presented.
Oh, in the future you could.
Yeah.
That doesn't stop a future application.
Right, right.
Oh.
So I, we can do that. Outside of that, I'm surprised he didn't come, except that I
I'm not.
I think he just thought, you know, did you talk with him, any further?
Yes.
Yeah, so he probably just figured, I'll just not do it as long as he has a permit, that's all he'll ever use.
Exactly.
Yeah. And it does, it, it almost doesn't look, given the way this was drawn, that the need associated with the kitchen, which is a second kitchen, was so significant that it couldn't be done without it. Because it was meant to be connected the whole time. It's not like it was a totally separate living unit where someone who's going to live in there and be able to live on their own and not bother the main tenant, as it were, if they didn't want to. If this is, if it's a mom and dad, mom and dad comes down, there's a kitchen.
Well, what's, well, what, what's happened is, uh, Mrs. Shrank's husband passed away and their daughter is, is going to come in and live with them.
Just one, so a single person.
A single person, from what I understand.
Yeah, so.
I may be wrong, but, uh.
Yeah, I don't know.
Anyways, okay, uh, what's dispense with us, we've got John to take care of tonight, so. Your motion to deny. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's made. And second it to deny this application. Who's in favor? So you can say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, do we need, do we, since we didn't, since we didn't say in our draft, do we need to have a, another motion to authorize the clerk to draft a denial for signature at our next available meeting? Which will be?
Aye.
Because we, we didn't create any provision for writing that.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that, that the board authorizes the clerk, myself, to draft a decision of denial based upon finding the application did not comply with the provisions of section six point six point, six point six.
Okay.
Second the motion.
Okay.
This is how the Hubbard just mentioned six point six, point two, point two.
Right.
Oh, just include all of six point six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole of it. Okay, any further discussion? Who's in favor, second, right, signing aye?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, do we have to clear that table off because I think John's got lots of new drawings and everything else for us?
Oh, really?
Okay, continued public hearing. The Tompkins Trust, Mary Ann Way, case number eight ten point oh six. John, do you realize this is four years?
I know. These are all four years old.
Four unpaid years.
Well, how about you who cash in your checks?
Watch it, John may be getting paid, but we're not.
Okay, uh, well, it's, I guess what we need to do is, uh, I know John's got some new plans and I don't know what else he's got for us, but we've had requested certain things from him. Am I right, Tom?
Uh, well, we, we, in fact, I, I, I brought, uh, not thinking they're going to get more, but that's great. Uh, the copy of the letter we presented a year ago, about a year ago to you, to which you responded. Mr. Chairman, I suppose that I, I will also mention to the board that probably three weeks ago, uh, during a, uh, during a coincidental, um, uh, I hesitate to call it meeting, uh, visit to the offices, Don and myself, um, and Lisa had discussed Mary Way and what our steps might be, and Edie Neder, who's been our consultant on it, had indicated she wanted to get an update from us. Uh, so we took the liberty of spontaneously reaching out to Edie by phone and she happened to be available. Uh, so there was a brief conversation, less than perhaps twenty minutes, in which Edie and Don and I discussed some of the, the timeline of events that have transpired in the last four, five, six months with specific reference to the Coorsley and Witten report that was finally generated and the waiting for results. So that's one element that I think perhaps, maybe you're going to be getting us some more information about ahead of conservation. The commission had expressed a desire to get feedback from you, basically on their report, John. So we were waiting to see that. There was also simply the comment that there, there's still some confusion, which was brought up in our last meeting, about the, uh, the deeded ownership of all of the plots, since there are multiple plots here. So there's some, there's a desire to discuss, I think, further whether or not, as, as Bob suggested, we might, we might consider doing a title search in order to actually see who owns what and what's the status of it now. Unless you can provide us information, which we can confirm is accurate. Thirdly, there was also a conversation around the subject of the, what is now former purchase and sale agreement, the conditions of which expired on December of two thousand thirteen. So Mr. Frangos's relationship as a actual controller of the property is, is technically speaking, no longer on the table. Uh, so there either needs to be issued a new purchase and sale agreement or, as Edie pointed out, there's actually some question now as to whether or not the board is, is, is dealing with a, a valid application because, um, we, one, we don't have anybody who's expressed an interest in doing this project having any controlling interest over it, either projected or otherwise. So there's some questions there. The other, the, the final element that Edie brought to our attention was that she believed that there was some question about whether or not, from the original application, that, um, Mr. Frangos, who was the signer of the application, and his corporation was the applicant, and the owner was Tompkins Trust, that the forty B, the forty B eligibility is actually issued to the owner of the property. And therefore, the actual applicant for the forty B application should have been actually completed by the trust as opposed to.
I think it was.
No, it wasn't. It's signed by Mr. Frangos, the applicant is his.
Application?
The applica- the original application, with all the documentation, which was, which was submitted with it, indicates that the name of his firm, I think, is Building Corporation. Billings Corporation of America, or something like that. Okay? That, that entity was the applicant, not a natural person, as we now know what that term means. And, uh, so, so that, John, raised another issue. So those are some current issues. And, and it was her feeling, and Don, you should correct or otherwise, uh, supply further information, as you recall, that we get updated information now, uh, on those issues. The board's going to have to consider what to do. I don't know what the board's going to do. It wasn't certainly, uh, a position for Don or I to do anything other than complete that and report it to the rest of the board, uh, with whatever else you provide for us. But I think Edie's recommendation was that we, again, shortly generate one final letter at this point in time, going over any of those material items that, that we can, we want from you, give you time to produce it, and then move forward on, on moving the case to a point where we, uh, we think about, uh... ending the hearing process. Is that essentially it?
Right, yeah.
Did a good job.
All right, so there, so there are, there are a number of issues there that are still, I think, plaguing the board. So hopefully you can help us, John, so...
Okay, okay. We have a letter from the Conservation Commission. And I will read it. This was sent on March twelfth. Dear Commissioners and interested parties, regarding the above-subject application, and it is, uh, through the Valley Conservation Commission. Okay, and a copy going to Lisa and Rosie and Don Thurston. Continued NOI land of Daniels Road, also known as Marion Way Project sixty-three dash six twenty-five, Tompkins Distardles Trust. Dear Commissioners and interested parties, regarding the above-subject application, the applicant's engineer, Mr. John Decouz, has granted the commission's request for a continuance through Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, meaning in order to avoid a potential storm problem on the commission's park. Agenda item, continued notice of intent for land off Daniels Road, map nine, parcel twenty-three. The Tompkins Distardles Trust, through Tompkins Trustee, propose construction of six duplex buildings with associated roadway, driveways, utilities, stormwater facilities, and grading possibly within a hundred-foot buffer zone to BBW. The office received delivery today of revised stormwater report dated February eighteen, two thousand fourteen, with included planned revisions in response to the first pair review conducted by Horsley Witten Group, HWG, dated November twelfth, two thousand thirteen. The office mailed a packet to Horsley Witten by priority mail. It was requested if HWG may be able to schedule attendance at the April fifteenth meeting. It is anticipated that this submittal will be delivered with the meeting packet for March twenty-fifth, either tomorrow or beginning of next week. Left base.
I've got, I've got one striking reaction to that note.
Six?
Yeah. Where'd that number come from? Is that a new number? I'm sorry? This, this, the agenda item from the Conservation Commission indicates that the continued NOI, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, line two, proposed construction of six duplex buildings with associated driveways. Is that an incorrect number here? Or are you building six units now instead of ten? Want to see it?
We're, we're building, the proposal was for ten units.
Right, this says six.
Oh, I think, I, I think the six that he's talking about are within the buffer zone.
Okay.
Huh?
That's, that's, that's what it is.
Within the buffer zone? Okay. There, he does say ingrained possibly with, it says possibly within one hundred-foot buffer zone. It sounds like that's a, it's, that's not a known, but that's what that was meaning? That's where that is?
That they would have jurisdiction on the, on the six units, but not on the others.
Okay, okay. Thanks. Okay. The other... No, that's just our letter and John's response today. Okay.
On the deeds, I, I thought we squared that problem away, no?
John, I don't, I don't, unless you gave us those deeds, I don't think we have anything further on. We had a conversation about it, and, and we have, you know, there's some understandings that there were deeds that were transferred, uh, upon, um, Mrs. Tom, Mrs. Tompkins' death. But, you know, there's multiple properties here. We've seen one lot. There's only been one lot that we've had any knowledge of. There's lots of things involved, so no.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I thought I gave you the deeds. If I haven't, I'll gladly submit them as soon as possible. And I have a deed location plan that I think I also gave you, but I'll, I'll send a, I'll bring, I'll, I'll send a copy of that lot so you can actually see on the, a layout of the Tompkins property, which deed goes with which parcel.
Yeah, would that, we would need as much, that would be very helpful.
Because we, we need to have copies of that.
What, what else do we need on the deeds to know that they're...
Well, the deeds that, that I saw didn't demonstrate that an applicant was an owner. They were, they were deeds to people who weren't, you know, maybe as an applicant.
Okay.
And, and it was, I understand we cleared it up, but I, there is a deed, a declaration of trust.
Is that the one that you did have, and you were going to ask to get you a copy? Because there's something about a deed that you said you didn't have it. You thought that we had it.
Quite, quite possibly. But anyway, I do have, I do have a declaration of trust, and I have the book and page number right here, and I have a copy of the deed here. But I'll, I'll put all that together and, and send it into you.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing the deed you saw.
Okay.
Well, it was more than one, I thought.
You did? Okay.
Yeah, there, there are three deeds.
Yeah, and you couldn't tell from those deeds...
What deed, what?
Who the owners were, who the owners of record were, because it, you had probates in it. I mean, if it was me, I'd, I'd require, uh, you know, a title opinion.
So we may, we may have to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Regardless of what you give us, um, we'll, we'll try to track that. Lisa, you must have it in the file. Okay.
Well, you can't tell from an individual document what is bef, you can tell what's before it, if it's title referenced. You can't tell what's afterward. And, and you can have, you can have a deed from ten years ago, and you don't know if it's been deeded out. You know what's in, you don't know what's out subsequently, or what deaths have occurred. So until somebody can, you know, give a certification of title currently, you don't have somebody standing.
That's our dilemma, John. And that's the scrutiny that's going to occur here, is that anything you give us, we're going to ask Bob to review. And if he says, I don't know, then the only, the only solution we're going to have...
Well, that's easy, though. It's, I mean, I'm not a title examiner.
No, but, but you've seen more...
A certification of title from somebody who's qualified to certify title stands in the name of, as of this date. It's easy.
Okay.
You know, unless it's so obvious to us that it's current, but, I mean, if there's...
Well, Bruce has a local lawyer, Nipswich, I'm trying to, Greeno, Don Greeno?
You know?
Yeah.
You know?
And, uh, he's in the new building there by the railroad tracks, what's, what...
Over by Hepscow somewhere. Is that where, is that, is that the building?
Well, he used to be right downtown.
It's downtown, yeah.
He used to be, but...
And, uh...
He's upstairs. Anybody who wants the certified title, if they have the qual, you know...
So we'll, we'll talk to him, I'm sure.
Okay, well, I, I think the board would want to be able to, once we have that, we still, I would still like to understand.
I don't know if you're saying something to somebody who has a right to.
Right. Well, and, and frankly, that's where the issue with the application and Mr. Frangos's relationship now, because there's no, there's no operating P and S. So even, even though the intent is, may all still be perfectly the same, technically speaking, he has no legal authority on the property.
And why, and why is that? Because it expired?
Expired.
When? At the end of the year?
December, yeah. I was struck, when you give, when you finally gave it to us in, I think you gave it to us in July or August of last year, something like that, it had been dated about twelve to fourteen months before that, which was still well after the initiate, you know, the beginning of this process. But at the, but as I read through the document, it said, you know, if nothing happens by December two thousand thirteen, this is done.
Okay.
Now, again, you can, you can produce that, but there's still some question in Edie's mind about whether or not the application should have come from the trust, or whether it should be, whether it should be from Mr. Frangos. It might have to be from the trust, so...
Because actually, as, as Tom said, the eligibility letter was granted to the Distardles Trust, but the application was from Frangos.
And it, and it may have been the way it was submitted, and it was just actually incorrectly completed. But her understanding is that, you know, Frangos doesn't have the eligibility to apply for the forty B, the trust stuff. Frangos is just a buyer. Of the land. Now, Edie, we had the conversation with Edie when we did, because she was also going to be unavailable until April. So we, we won't be able to get any more clarification from her at that point until, well, it'll be a couple more weeks. So we spoke to her, like I said, a couple weeks ago. I think it was the second or third.
Perhaps, and, and I'm not sitting on this application, but just a suggestion. Perhaps to avoid future confusion as to what's been produced or what's been requested, board might suggest that this, the clerk or his designee send a letter outlining exactly what you're looking for, so there'll be no confusion, no memory question about what, what was already sent, or...
That, that was a letter that was sent, uh, a year ago.
A year ago.
May.
Yeah, okay. So, so just...
And he responded to that, and we did go through that since that.
Same idea.
Right. An update, and I, I brought a copy, because I'm sure none of it, for each of us tonight.
Was that, was that letter May sixteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got a copy of it.
Right. So that each of us could refer to it, because we, this is what Edie suggests we do, exactly what you're suggesting, is let's, let's, again, since we're almost a year now down the road, some of which you provided some of this stuff, but now we have a few new issues, as we pointed out. And I, I think after whatever you give us, we'll look at it and see if it generates any more questions. And then what we'll do probably in the, we're not going to have an April meeting, May meeting. So probably in a May meeting, we'll come back at you with some, with a similar document.
Fair enough.
New document. Doing just that. Because you're right, unfortunately, I... Yeah, I, you'd have to have this on, on, online so you could call up everything we were referring to. There's so much stuff that has come in on the file, even as dated as it is. Anyhow, John, what else you got? Give us what you got.
Well, uh... I guess probably the best thing to do is just, uh... See, let's, why don't you take that, Lisa? Because that has an original signature. And Lisa asked me to submit fifteen copies so she could pass them around. And there's a letter here that you might want to read, Mr. Chairman. Whoops, sorry. Okay, this is dated March twentieth. Our always own Board of Appeals Annex Building, thirty-nine Central Street. I'll leave that. Marion Way Projects, your case number eight ten oh six. Dear members, enclosed please find fifteen copies of the following items for your review. Proposed conditions plan revised February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Our file number two seven two dash six S two point one. Responses to fire department comments. Three branch turnaround comparison plan, February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Four, figure twelve point two for Mass Highway, Highway Design Manual. Also, revised stormwater report was submitted to the Valley Conservation Commission on March tenth and was forwarded to Horsley Witten for technical reviews. And now, is that letter there? Okay, and one of the items that I enclosed was the fire department had some concerns about the turnaround, whether they could maneuver it. And I've... overlaid a small plan that, that you have a copy of there, that one there, and it shows, uh... It shows what the Mass Highway, Highway Design Manual suggests for a branch turnaround. And I've got superimposed on that what we're proposing, and it's considerably larger than, uh, than what the, what they would find acceptable.
And, and are you saying, John, that, that the fire department have problem with your expanded version?
Right.
You're saying?
Right, yeah.
So as far as you're concerned, I suspect you're, you're well, you're well over the compliance with what needs to be done.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. And, and I so state in, in the, in my response, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you pick up one?
I will.
And he also brought up the subject about snow, but the width of the pavement's twenty-six feet, what we're proposing, and that's what a standard subdivision calls for. All right, here's responses to the fire department's comments. Now, the proposed pavement width of twenty-six feet is the standard width of pavement as described in the rules and regulations of the Raleigh Planning Board for all new subdivisions, including the recent nearby subdivision, Emily Lane. The Raleigh Police Department... The Raleigh Police Department, in cooperation with the Highway Department, prohibits parking on streets from approximately Thanksgiving Day to March 31 for the purpose of snow plowing and emergency access such as fire apparatus. Two, enclosed please find a copy of Mass Highway Design Manual page depicting a branch turnaround. Please see the note. Of all these designs, all these designs will accommodate a SU-designed vehicle. Example of SU, single-unit vehicles, are school buses, construction trucks with two rear axles, and fire engines like the one at the Raleigh Fire Department, model E1. The branch design that is being proposed for Marion Way is considerably larger than the size recommended in the Mass Highway Design Manual. Please see the enclosed branch turnaround comparison plan, where the Mass Highway turnaround has been overlaid onto the proposed Marion Way turnaround. Note, the Mass Highway dimensions have been converted from metric units to feet, for easier comparisons. The proposed design will easily accommodate single-unit vehicles and also any vehicle that travels over the road, including large tractor trailers that can go to the end of the road, back up through branch, turn, and exit, as shown by the arrows and vehicles located on Mass Highway branch design. Vehicles will not be parked at driveway entrances at one leg of the hammerhead, but will be parked in their own driveways adjacent to the drawings, similar to other lots. The hydrant has been moved to the common boundary of lots four and five, as suggested. And there hasn't been any real drastic changes on the plan. We did modify the infiltration basin number one, which is closer to Daniel's Road. We redesigned that a little bit. And we redesigned one of the drainage bays, called settlement four bays, down near the end of the road. And that's the extent of the changes that we made. But that plan is pretty much what we've submitted probably the last two meetings, maybe more.
I'm sure more because I think... I don't think you've given us anything to actually do on the plan nonsense, maybe September, October.
I know, I know.
You know, maybe you can help me though. I'm confused because I don't see it... For instance, I'm not getting the overlay of what appears to be the road and the driveway access points here. And I don't see where this... The truck turnout that you just pointed out for the fire department, that makes sense to me from a compliance point of view. I just don't see... I'm not seeing it here. I don't get it. So could you just show me on the plan?
Yeah.
You know, show me where... I mean, I see the road down here.
Right, and there's... That there is a comparison plan. That's 40 scale, and I blew it up 20 scales so it'd be more legible.
Okay. When you say comparison plan, I mean, I'm seeing the road come in here, correct?
Right, yeah.
All right, now, I see driveway access points here for these two.
Exactly.
Okay. So is this... What is this? I don't get this. What the hell is that?
That's a cul-de-sac, but it's really on paper.
It's just on paper.
You'll never see it, you know, as a finished product. You won't see any lines on the ground of that.
Oh, so this is... Is this... These lot designations... This looks to conform to the lot, but lots six and seven seem to be... Oh, I see. You've got... There's two lots here. So this was just part of an original paper design of this.
Exactly, you're right, right.
All right, so the road comes down to...
The pavement, yeah.
The pavement comes down to here?
No, no.
No? It just goes to here?
That's right.
Oh, so this is the turnout right here?
Exactly.
Oh, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Exactly.
I got it.
So if you're not going to have a turnaround, why have you got... You're showing a cul-de-sac, and that's D2, right?
That's correct. That's the D2 right-of-way.
That's the D2 right-of-way. And it goes right through everybody's front yard. And halfway of the... Of the...
From the driveways.
The retention basin. Right, this is retention basin?
Detention basin, yeah.
All right. If you provided this here, why are you doing this?
Excuse me? What are you pointing?
He's... John, that's just a drawing. That's this here?
I know, I know. It's just on paper.
Right.
But why is he even showing it? If this is the road...
That's the pavement.
That's the pavement, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree. I was confused by that.
Why are you showing this at all?
Because that's the right-of-way. I have to show it.
So your right-of-way... Your right-of-way actually goes across all of these lots?
Well, when you say across, it goes... The lots begin about where your finger just was.
Yeah, you're saying that the lots actually begin at about there.
No, they begin at the dark line, the heavy line, right there. That's the lot corner.
This is the lot... So the lot corner is here?
That's correct.
Not here on street?
Exactly, exactly. Those are driveways.
Okay, so the driv... So the driveways are all... These part of the driveways are all on your right-of-way?
Exactly.
I see, okay. This probably, you know... I understand why you did it the way you did, but I think for our purposes, it would have been helpful if it was designated differently. Because to me, I'm saying, oh, is this where the parking is? Is this where it goes? But here I can see that it's... This is the... So a fire truck is going... You're suggesting the fire truck can pull down in here, go in here and do that?
Well, actually, it's the... Exactly, the latter one, yeah, right. Or large trailer trucks or anything else.
Yeah, yeah. And this... The way it's drawn here is the enlarged version you showed on this comment letter.
Right, right.
And yet, the fire department still, you say, has a qualm with this design or with this... Design and size or just size? I mean, what do they want? To make it bigger? Is that what you think they want?
I don't know. You know, to me, there's plenty of room there. You want to see... You know, we also did a survey oddly enough of the fire station property. And you want to see how they back up a fire truck there. I mean, it is so close. They have trouble. They have trouble backing it up. And this is, I don't know, three or four times the size of the area they have on Hammond Street.
Yeah, well, I'm presuming that a fire department's assessment of parking... Of backing up and parking capability is based on some assumptions that include obstacles in the road or inability to move a vehicle. It's not as though it's 100% open. I know what you're talking about over at the fire department. I mean, it's a postage-stamped lot in the first place. And it's not like the trucks are almost bigger than the building. It's amazing they put it in there. But I assume they're having to calculate what would be involved in moving a vehicle around in here if they had to, and there were instructions in the road or other vehicles in the road. But even so, I mean, if you comply, I don't know... I don't know how we can have an argument with the fact that you comply with state code. You're above the code.
Yeah, we're way above it. You know, we're not just 5% or 10%. We're way over it.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever that math is, I mean, if you were at the state code, maybe there'd be more grounds for an argument. But I... You know, I mean, we could certainly... I know we could have Chief Broderick come in and talk to us about it if we wanted, certainly. I mean, that would...
Well, let's see. What do you respond?
Yeah, no, no, well, I mean, because... I mean, the final element of our data gathering is to say again to all departments, "Okay, this is what we got. Now what do you think?"
Right.
So... Thanks for the clarification.
It's too bad the drawings have ended up being so complicated, but that's the name of the game today. You know, with all these regulations, you need all that information on the plan.
And you're now waiting for through the CONCOM, Horsley and Witten's reaction to your feedback.
Right.
Okay. Which we hope to have in April.
Oh, yeah. They usually take a couple of weeks, three weeks tops. Isn't the only set of plans you have, John?
I have other plans, but they're drainage plans.
Huh?
They're drainage plans.
You have a plan just of the road? You have a plan of just... That shows the road and the lots? It shows the front edge?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And it shows the area of each lot?
Yeah.
And the front edge of each? Do you have one?
Yes.
Do you have one of those?
I don't think I have one. Would be, I might have.
Well, it should be part of this. I mean, this is only one plan.
Well, I know. And that's the plan I submitted to Horsley and Witten. That's why I brought it tonight.
No, that's fine. But as Don says, you know, if this is dated as, you know, we're going to look at this as the most current plan.
Right.
It's February... February, what year is this?
1418.
Yeah. 218. And there are notations here on total... Well, those... No, the only space notations here seem to apply to open space easements.
Says open space easement, total area 13,911 square feet.
And it looks like we have information about distances between properties and the size of the property itself, meaning the physical structure, but...
No lot sizes?
We don't have lot sizes.
We don't have lot sizes.
Not only are they not here, but there's not the information to calculate it.
No, I do have a plan of land.
I'm sure you do somewhere.
Oh, yeah. No, and you have a copy, but I'll bring another copy.
Well, if we have it, if we...
If this is your latest plan,
we want... I want a plan showing just the road with the lots.
And not...
And never mind all the driveways.
Right, right. No, I understand.
I don't know where the buildings are going to be located.
And... That plan has not changed from day one, the lot sizes.
So the lot sizes are all the same?
Yeah. But the road has changed. The entrance has changed. The pavement has changed, but not the actual right-of-way.
So the size of the road in the right-of-way has basically been static? It's the only thing that you're saying has been modified is down here at the mouth of the road? The actual shape down there?
Right, right. And that concerns the pavement only?
Yeah.
Not the right-of-way? That's why I made those... The lot lines and the right-of-way much heavier so, you know, you could... They would stand out from all the other contour lines.
Okay, well, then, John, if you can... Would you find a... Would you send us... Send Lisa a note about the plan that we can refer to that has the information that Don wants on it? I mean, you don't have to send us another plan. You can say, "On a plan dated such and such date." Because if we got it...
I can tell you right now, it's the name of the... It's called Plan of Land. But I'll gladly send you another copy, right?
And you think that was part of the original submission?
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm sure we all have that file.
Yeah.
We just have to go back to it. But we could attach that to this.
Making copies is the easiest part of this business.
Did you have anything else you would bring us today?
No, that's it. But I'll get the other items we talked about, and I'll mail them right in. I'll bring them in.
You can mail them because we won't see it till May.
Okay, so this is the latest set of plans. I would like to have seen this plan along with all the others, all up to date and stuff like that, rather than going through everything else. But... Lisa did that plan out. Okay? You have any other questions of John while he's here?
No, I would only ask, John, that... It sounds like the CONCOM will have a meeting in April, and we will not. and we will not. And if, whatever results come back from Horsley and Witten, when you get them, if certainly, if it's available for their meeting, that, once you have them, that a copy is, you send copies to us so we can have them for the next meeting. I don't have anything else right now.
Okay, do we have anything else that we'll need to gather up here?
Uh, well, I think, I, I think what we'll do is, yeah, there will be the items we talked about, but I think what we'll do is...
Wait till May?
Well, I think we have to.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, I think, you know, I mean, I can, I can, I can draft a summary statement of all of the things that I think we will want.
That would be good.
For, you know, for a May meeting, so that by the time we get whatever comes from the Horsley, Witten, Concom feedback, and what we know we want now, we can just present it and say, here, you know, put these, and then, and then, you know, I don't know if it's something we want to, you know, we could decide whether or not we want to put a timeframe on when John gets back, whether it's thirty days or sixty days, or, you know, what we want to do at that point, but certainly we can do that since we're not going to do it for April. I thought we would do it for April, but we won't have the April meeting, so. Is that timeframe work for you?
Fine. Tom Fragas is still interested, he came by the office today, wanted three copies of the plans, so...
Well, that's, I hope he's interested enough to sign a document to say he'll buy in front of me. I'm interested in a lot of things I don't buy.
I mean, we, we had, we had a FOAB, as you know, out there on Route One. The applicant, the applicant for that was Ipsos Savings Bank, because they owned the park.
Right.
And they applied, they applied for, for, whether they had an engineer or not, yeah, they did. They, they came into us and they wanted to build ninety, ninety houses in there.
Fifty-six.
And, and we looked at their plans and so forth, and we told them we wanted the road looped. So they came back to us and say, okay, we'll loop the road, they showed the plans, the road looped, and they wanted a hundred and four houses now, prepared for the loop. And we finally denied it.
I know. I, I, I was following that closely, right.
Okay, all right. And they, they appealed it to the Housing Fields Committee. The Housing Fields Committee asked us if we would negotiate, and they asked them if they would negotiate, and we both said yes, and we did. And we put together, but through negotiation, through the Housing Fields Committee, to come up with a plan that we had. We wound up with forty houses, forty lots, and ten lots of commercial property, which is unheard of in a forty B application to get commercial land out of.
I know.
All right. One of our requirements was that each lot had to comply, minimum of what the central district lot size was.
I see.
Okay? But they had forty lots, and they got ten units of affordable housing out of those forty lots. And each, and each, each affordable housing building has two units in it, and the property line goes right down to the middle of the house.
Right, and I've seen the plans, right.
So, so if you look at, if you look at, if you look at the, the plan, you'll see that each unit has in excess of twenty thousand square feet. All right? So we've got one single unit on twenty thousand square feet. And in the next lot, we have another unit with twenty thousand plus square feet. You're giving us one, two units on twenty thousand, less than twenty.
I know, less than twenty, I know.
And to me, that's...
I understand.
And I, I just wish that, you know, right from the beginning, you would come in here and sat down with us and said, this is what we'd like to buy, what will you, but you never gave us a chance to, to negotiate with you, to work through it. You just kept saying, no, this is it, this is it, this is it, take it or leave it, take it, so...
It's a tough piece of property, you know, if we had, if that pond wasn't there, it'd change the whole structure of the, the situation. Just limited by the water.
You know, you're, you're, we got, with, with your plans here, we have ten buildings, twenty units. And how many of them is going to be affordable, five?
Right.
You know, you, you originally gave us a plot plan of, of showing the road in the six different lots, and saying, you know, this is a conventional building, you know, this, so forth and whatnot.
Right, and, and the, yeah, the zoning setback plan, right.
I would have liked to have seen that plan put into effect with one building on East Lot with three apartments in it.
You know, we were more than satisfied with the zoning at Emily Lane. And at that time, the frontage was a hundred twenty-five feet, forty thousand square feet. Now the frontage is a hundred and fifty, and sixty thousand square feet. We can only get, I think, only three lots with the conventional subdivision on, on, on this piece of property.
But you never, you never, you just came and told us ten buildings, that's it. This is what we're going to have. But I don't believe you could, I don't believe you need it. But that's me.
Yeah.
That's me. I'm frustrated. I've spent four years of my time on this project and it's gone nowhere.
Not just your time. All of us.
Okay, it's eight thirty. I'm going to go home.
Good.
Okay, we got nothing else?
Okay, all right, thanks, John.
Okay, thank you very much. Going to move to continue this, May? Uh, yes. Thank you.
Right, if it was something you needed to do, I couldn't.
Okay, I hear motions, continue this hearing to a May meeting.
Slow move.
Which is going to be, uh, May fifteenth?
Yeah.
Looks at?
Yes, yes.
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. It just got to fourteen and we just blew away into the fifth month of paper. What the heck?
Okay, John.
Okay, thank you very much, good night.
I was seconded motion on the floor, that wasn't done.
You're right.
Motion's been made, second, continue this, May fifteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll put you ahead for seven thirty, John.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Slow move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.